Roll call, please.
Councilmember Conley.
Present.
Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Councilmember Mobley.
Here.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Here. Thank you. And our first item of business tonight is introduction of a new employee, our new police dispatcher, Emma Balk.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Johnson and Honorable City Council. It's my distinct pleasure this evening to introduce the newest member of the Fortuna Police Department, Emma Balk. Emma has just completed the Dispatch Academy with the College of the Redwoods, and she is currently on her training program with Paige White as her FTO. And she is a Humboldt native. We are very pleased with her ability to perform customer service-related tasking and her desire to help people. It's a different story for a different time, but she's just this week become also a valued member of our new recruiting team. So we'll go into that in the weeks to come. Emma is a Humboldt native, and she lives on her family's ranch here in the region. She played a lot of sports growing up and through high school and still enjoys, you know, playing softball, adult softball league, and taking walks with her dog and just spending time outdoors. So Emma is a woman of a few words. We asked her for a bio, and she provided just a couple of highlights. And so we are, again, just very proud of Emma so far and very pleased to have her as part of the Police Department family. So please join me in welcoming Emma, and she has a few words.
Thank you, guys, for this opportunity, and I look forward to being with the agency for many years. That's all I got for you.
Thank you for that. Next item is oral comments from the public. If anybody has a comment they'd like to make?
Good evening again, Mayor Protem Johnson and Honorable City Council. I just want to take a moment off the agenda and for formalities, Chief Dave, Fortuna Police Department, to announce that earlier we had applied for the Federal COPS Hiring Grant, the CHP as they call it, COPS Hiring Program. And we were actually one of 21 agencies throughout California that was successful in obtaining the grant. We got that notification, the city manager and I did, just a few days ago. So I wanted to announce that. I know an email was sent out, but I wanted the community to have the benefit of knowing that we were successful in that grant application as well. And just let the council know that my department heads will be working with the CM over the next few weeks to bring a recommendation to council on how we intend to maximize that grant.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Any other comments?
Hello, I'm Mary Godell from Fortuna. I've been here for years. May I read what I have written down here? We moved into our home in 1970 on Kenmar Road, did not go all the way through to Roneville Road. Then the city opened it all the way to Roneville Road. The traffic is like a freeway. They go 50 to 60 miles all the time. I can try to cross the street, stand there, and they go flying by me. There are no crosswalks. My bedroom wall is on the side of Kenmar Road. I do not feel safe in my own house. It is hazardous to people and bikes. Can the city put in indulations or humps or a stop sign at Crestview with lights like on Roneville Road? I sat for one hour when the city put in the new speed sign to slow people down. They went just as fast. They paid no attention to it. Today, when it rained, you guys know how it rained when we came here tonight. They just drove the same as usual. Thank you for trimming the trees, the overhanging trees on Kenmar Road. They were very hazardous also. They were over the double yellow line, and I thought, one of them's going to come down and hit somebody. So my husband last week said, honey, there's some street people out there working. So I got my clip buttered, and down I went. And the guy that was manager of it that day, he said, Mary, we're taking it all the way back to the curb. So thank you, guys, and I hope that we can get something done on Kenmar Road. It's really bad. I would love to invite the chief here, anybody else that would like to come to my house for one hour and watch the traffic. You'll be appalled. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anything to read into the record?
I do have one additional set of correspondence to read into the record. It's dated November 6, 2023. City of Fortuna, we have lived at 2,400 Kenmar Road for 34 years. When Kenmar went through to Kenwood, more traffic has been speeding past our house. We believe it is the city's responsibility to enforce the speed of traffic at the posted limit. We've been told that the City of Fortuna considers Kenmar a throughway. A throughway is a wide road designed so that a lot of traffic can move along it very quickly. It is usually divided along the middle so that traffic traveling in one direction is separated from traveling in the opposite direction. Throughway means a through street or highway whose entire roadway is reserved for through traffic and on which roadway parking is prohibited. In Fortuna, there is only one throughway where School Street starts through Ross Hill Road, joining Fortuna Boulevard, ending where Fortuna Boulevard and Roneville Road meet. That would be classified as a throughway. Number one, there is no divider along the middle of Kenmar Road. Number two, cars and trucks are allowed to park on both sides of Kenmar Road, Kenwood, between Crestview and Roneville Road. Pictures show the difference between Kenmar Road, two lanes, and Fortuna Boulevard, four lanes, which the council has provided with the pictures that came with the correspondence prior to this meeting. Our recommendation would be to replace the speed limit signs 25 miles per hour eastbound and 35 miles per hour westbound in front of our house with radar speed signs. Thank you, Doug and Sue Smith, 2,400 Kenmar Road.
Thank you for reading that into the record.
Mayor Protem Johnson, if I could just add one comment, I just want to say that we had received the comments from Mary and the other neighbor that were just read into the record, and we've had some increased enforcement out there. We put a radar feedback sign out there that's capable of giving us some of the actual data. So we haven't downloaded the data yet, but we'll be looking at that. And we take complaints and concerns about speeding seriously, and we'll take a look at this, and we'll have some real data to decide how we move forward.
So there has been some movement on that, then.
I'm aware of that. We appreciate that.
All right, thank you. We'll close public comment, and we'll come to the consent calendar, four items. The council minutes from October 16, report of dispersments, authorize the city manager to submit grant applications for Cal recycle, and award of a professional services contract to design and repair, design the repair of the Monday Club chimney, and approve of supplemental budget request. Anybody want to pull anything? And motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as printed.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? And thank you. And we'll move to city council business. First item is approve a supplemental budget request and professional services contract with GHD for the design and environmental services for the Mill Creek Habitat Connectivity Project. Staff report?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Protem and honorable council members. Brendan Byrd, City Engineer, Public Works Director, I will be giving the council presentation this evening. I'd also like to acknowledge Jeremy Sfella. He's here with GHD this evening. He's going to be or will be the project manager slash director for this project, assuming it gets approved. And he's been very instrumental in bringing this funding and this project about, of which I'll go into in here in a minute. I do plan to be brief. We did speak about this project, the Mill Creek Habitat Connectivity Project, about mid-July, I believe, when staff brought forward the authorizing resolution recommendation that was used for the project grant application. For those unfamiliar or just as a brief refresher, the project in general encompasses producing the engineering design and environmental documentation for four crossings of Mill Creek in the City of Fortuna. Mill Creek is the southernmost of our four major streams that goes through the city. It begins down in the southern portion of the former Palco Mill Site. It's actually a tributary to Strong's Creek down there. It generally runs in between the Kenmar-Kenwood neighborhood, the School Street neighborhood as it goes up Mill Street, and then ultimately it headwaters up past Ridwood Empire Golf and Country Club, the golf course up there. So on the tail end of the Jameson Creek Fish Passage Project, staff were very interested in continuing to apply for and obtain grant funding for various restoration slash drainage infrastructure projects here in the city. We have been very successful over the last 10-plus years with Rona Creek and Hillside Creek, projects on Strong's Creek, and most recently on Jameson Creek. One that we had not paid much attention to yet at that time was Mill Creek. Mill Creek is one of the smaller of the major salmon and bearing tributaries in the city, but it is highly productive, we have noticed, and CDFW has actually tracked and monitored Coho and other anadromous species in that stream. And we do have one crossing specifically at Mill Creek and Weber Street, which is in the Camden Heights neighborhood area, where we do have a reasonable partial to full fish passage barrier. And it's also an aging piece of infrastructure near the end of its reasonable design life, similar to like Jameson Creek was when we pursued funding for that project. So we began to look forward at different opportunities post-Jameson Creek, how we could, you know, package that methodology, methodology, let's call it, for obtaining grant funding to do the planning and design work and ultimately trying to position ourselves to go after construction implementation funding. These types of projects can get very expensive, much more so than the city's drainage funds could otherwise carry should an emergency or a regular replacement be required for any one of these. We did have some grant applications early on that were ultimately unsuccessful. Fortunately, this last year, we were made aware of an opportunity through the Wildlife Conservation Board, or WCB, where they had some funding set aside that they needed to obligate for restoration and ecological connectivity projects. And we got on the phone and had a productive pre-application meeting, and ultimately they were very interested in our Weber Street project. They just wanted to see it grow and scale ultimately to fit within the confines of the money they were trying to obligate. So we went back to the drawing board and put together a design and permitting, planning project package that would actually include the engineering designs for four crossings along Mill Street, or Mill Street, Mill Creek, the first being at Weber Street, and then again at Roneville Road, at Mill Street, and at Mountain View Road. So the grant application we put forward would be for the 100% engineering package in addition to the environmental documentation for each one of those crossings. And with that, we'd have the tools necessary in order to seek that next level implementation funding, of which, you know, there's still much of that out there to be had. So in July, we brought the authorizing resolution to the council for review and approval. Ultimately, it was approved, and with that, that was the final submittal in our grant package to the WCB. We were informed in late August, early September, that the board approved the city's project, and now we are the recipients of a grant on the order of $966,000 to complete the planning level work for the four crossings that I mentioned. So with all of that ironed out, we've been working on some of the paperwork with the WCB to finalize the grant agreement and to get everything in a row for us to begin actual reimbursable work on the project. And the next step that we need to do now is awarding the professional services contract. So I do want to note, we are recommending a sole source contract award to GHD for the scope of services that has been provided as attachment A in the staff report. Unlike many other projects that we do or grants that we work on, the WCB grant was really focused on a project team. Who's going to be the engineer? Who's the project delivery team? What are your qualifications? What projects have you done? You know, they really want to use that in their calculus when they're identifying grantees, that they're going to be folks that are going to deliver good projects, and they're going to be able to see it from cradle to grave and follow through on it. So GHD, in this case, is actually written into the grant with their qualifications in their past projects, in addition to the city and city staff as well. So with that, we recommend a sole source award of the scope of work to complete the Mill Creek Connectivity Project, which is consistent with the city's procurement policy, 2.50.070, which allows for sole source in cases such as these. So that's the project and the contract piece. Again, the scope of work that is proposed for the project has been included as attachment A, and I will note that it is consistent with the outline that's in the city's grant agreement with the WCB. So the scope with the engineering consultant matches all the deliverables and everything that is required of the city in that grant. Moving over to the financial impact piece, it is a grant, and it is actually a 100% no-match grant that we received from the WCB in the amount of $966,000. So that should cover all the expenses associated with delivering the final engineering design and permitting package for those four crossings. We did include in the grant and plan to contribute $10,000 as a soft mash in staff time, which will be used doing the regular activities, who would managing the project, reporting on the grant, quarterly reporting, providing some light-level field support, and participating in the design development and refinement process. So with that, that is everything I have, but we certainly recommend that the council approve the award of the contract to GHD and to approve the supplemental budget request associated therein, and that really, again, want to hammer home that the supplemental budget request is to recognize the WCB grant funding as revenue this fiscal year. We will continue to track the actual expenditures through the remainder of the fiscal year and budget accordingly in the subsequent year, as we do anticipate this will be a 12 to 18-month project, so it'll go on for some time. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, we do have Jeremy with GHD here this evening that can speak to the scope of work that's been included. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, have any questions?
No questions, but just a comment. Great job to you as well as GHD. Your hard work paid off, and with a huge grant award here, so a fantastic job for everybody. You did a fantastic job.
Thank you very much.
Any others? I just, one thing for clarification for some who may have heard, the $966,000 in a supplemental budget request, especially those at home, this is not taking money from reserves, but it's recognizing the grant funding and then allotting it into the budget so it can be tracked as needed. So we're not moving any general funds around. Everybody, no more questions? Is there any comments from the public?
I'm impressed with your presentation.
Thank you.
So are we.
They have track record of good projects that come through at or under budget and work as designed, so. Well, with that, we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute professional services contract with GHD for engineering and environmental services for the Mill Creek Habitat Community Project and authorize a supplemental budget request for $966,000.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? We have a project. And thank you. And the next item, a public hearing and introduction and first reading of ordinance 2023-764, amending chapters 1703 and 1706 and 1708, the municipal code to comply with multifamily design standards.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Johnson. Let me just pull up a PowerPoint presentation that I have here, the council. There we go. So this is an introduction and first reading of ordinance 2023-764, amending chapter 1703, 06, and 1708 of the 14 Municipal Code for consistency with adopted multifamily design standards. I think this will be the fifth time that the council's seen this in the last few months. So we brought a resolution with the design standard first, and then there were some changes made, so we had a first reading and a second reading, and there were changes that we had to do again. So we had to redo the first reading and the second reading, and so we moved that, or the resolution, we had to bring that back, and then we had to go back to the Planning Commission. So these are the actual updates to the municipal code that will reflect the multifamily design standards. So there's a couple of topics. One of the other things that we, so the multifamily design standards, as I mentioned, this proposed zoning code amendment also includes agricultural employee housing, also required by state law. So a little bit of background, this was last seen on the city council on September 5, when the council adopted the multifamily design standards. The multifamily design standards allow by right approval for multifamily and mixed-use residential projects that comply with those standards. The existing code requirements are that there's design review for all multifamily development and that a conditional use permit is required for six or more multifamily units in the multifamily residential zoning district, and that all multifamily projects in neighborhood commercial and retail commercial zoning districts. So the proposed zoning code amendments are, they remove the conditional use permit and design review requirements for those multifamily projects that are consistent with the multifamily design standards. And again, the intention of the state is to be able to make multifamily projects easier to pursue. The new section, the new sections require compliance with the multifamily design standards. They allow the project by right if the project is consistent with those standards. And in the case where there's deviations and a developer chooses not to or cannot comply with those standards, then they have the option to go to design review, which is the same process that we have now. To resolve the conflicts, the, between the multifamily design standards and zoning code, they removed, and I think we just went through this, they removed the conditional use permit requirement for six or more units and removes design review requirement for multifamily projects. The existing zoning code for agricultural allows for, requires a use permit for all labor camps and labor supply camps in the agricultural exclusive zone, and other agricultural uses in the AE Zone District are permitted use allowed without a use permit. So now you can do those agriculture uses but not having labor camps. So in response to state law requirements, the 17.03.040, the agricultural exclusive zoning district would add agricultural employee housing as a permitted use and add a requirement for evidence of a valid HCD permit, deed restriction for permanent or seasonal employee housing, and affidavit for temporary employee housing. So again, this is one thing that's not really typical, except for mobile home projects, is that they would fall under state jurisdictions and under housing and community development rather than our normal building permit process. And then secondarily, for 17.08.050, would add a new definition of agricultural employee housing. And that agricultural employee housing would be allowed by right for a maximum of 36 beds in a group, in group quarters of 12 units or spaces designed for use by a single-family household, or a maximum of 36 units meeting eligibility criteria and operated by an affordable housing organization. Other types of employee housing could be classified as labor camps or labor supply camps, allowed in the AE zoning district with a use permit. And you might ask yourself, well, where can this happen in the city? Where are those agricultural exclusive zones? So you can see on the left, there's one area, this is Clintenden's Apple Orchard, and there's a small area just south of Lonnie Drive. So probably unlikely a labor camp's going to be needed at Clintenden's Apple Orchard, but that's one of the areas that we have agricultural exclusive. And then you can see there's a much larger area, just to give you context, this is just south of the Kenmar interchange. You can see where the old Drake Hill at great intersection was here in the lower left, and you can see this area, the blue is Public Facility, which is our corrosion control facility. That's where the city's water wells and pump station are, so that area down here where Sichao strawberries are, and there's a larger agricultural area just to the south of the city, so the southern part of the city limits. So with that, staff's recommendation is that we hold the first reading of ordinance 2023-764 and read that by title only and continue the public hearing to Monday, December 4, 2023, for the second reading and adoption. And one of the reasons we're anticipating the potential cancellation at November 20, so we're pushing it to the first meeting of December. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And we'll open the public hearing. And do we have any questions or comments from council? This is the fifth time we've gone over this. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to hold first reading of ordinance 2023-764, read by title only and continue the public hearing to Monday, November 20, 2023, for the second reading. December 4?
December 4.
December 4, 2023, for the second reading.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote?
Ordinance 2023-764, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Fortuna, amending chapters 17.03, 17.06, and 17.08 of the Fortuna Municipal Code to comply with the multifamily design standards and to allow agricultural employee housing consistent with state law and determining the ordinance to be exempt from CEQA. Councilmember Conley.
Aye.
Councilmember Losi.
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes. And thank you. And now we come, is there any, oh, the city manager's report, favorite time.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Johnson. As typical, I'll review our upcoming meeting schedule. So our next regular council meeting is planned for November 20. We expect that we may counsel that meeting, and if that's the case, then our next regular scheduled council meeting will be on December 4 at 6:00 PM. Our next Planning Commission meeting is on October 14. Also at 6:00 PM, our next Measure E meeting still awaits out December 19. And then our next Rona Community Recreation and Park District meeting will be on December 6 at 2:30 PM at city council chambers. And our next Fortuna Business Improvement District meeting is on November 28 at 8:30 AM. Just a few things for my verbal report, we are, again, actively recruiting for Parks and Recreation Director. We, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to recommend a hire to council in the near future, so we'll be able to share more with that soon. I will say that with the Parks Director absence and the vacant position of Community Development Director, one of the things that we've done is recommended to the Rona Community Recreation Park District that they bring on some additional help. So the Rona Community Recreation Park District has hired Colette Sanchi, who also works as the Executive Director for LAFCO, and she's a consultant with Plan West Partners. So it's a great time for the district to be able to bring her on board, to be able to help and be the lead for staff. I'll remain involved in helping to assist with that effort as needed and for continuity, but it's been already great to have Colette and some of the team members with Plan West on board to assist with that. They're familiar with the 218 process that the district is looking at for fundraising, and they just bring a wealth of knowledge. So there's a lot happening there. So if anybody's interested in the future of a pool for the Old River Valley, come to the next Rona Community Recreation and Park District. We're still continuing the franchise agreement negotiations. We continue to work with Kathleen Gallagher with CSG Consulting, and we're working with a group of, with all the other local jurisdictions who are working with Kathleen to develop a model franchise agreement and move forward in a similar fashion. We also kicked off the food recovery contract with a company called Abound Food Care. Again, we're working as part of a regional effort to comply with SB 1383 to, you know, to comply with the mandates of food recovery. And so the county and the city and the other jurisdictions are all working with Abound to develop that food recovery program. And, you know, there's not a lot of food recovery agencies in the county. One of the big ones, Food for People, but, you know, we did learn during some of this process that, you know, there are opportunities for other food recovery organizations, so I want to make sure to take a look at groups like our Fortuna Senior Center and others who might be able to benefit from some of those food recovery efforts if there is additional food available through this process. And then lastly, I've been working with our Public Works Director and Finance Director. We're looking at methods for developing, updating our water and wastewater rate schedule. It's been since 2012 that the city's done that, so we're at a point now that that needs to happen to make sure that we're able to fund the projects that we need to have in the future for our water system, our water distribution system, our wastewater collection system, and our wastewater treatment. And so we're going to be putting a significant effort into that in the coming months and looking at requesting proposals to do those rate increases for water and wastewater. So with that, that concludes my report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mayor? Okay. With that, is there any future agenda items that council would like to bring up? No? Okay. Well, council reports then. Yes, sir.
Thank you. We had a redeck meeting, amended a couple of loans, and had a report from the Humboldt Rise Committee, a good little report for them. Other than that, just bearing down for the rainy season and getting ready.
Thank you. Councilmember Losi.
Thank you. I had attended Humboldt Transit Authority
I had attended a Humboldt Transit Authority meeting on October 4th for Tammy, and there was a lot of discussion on unmet transportation needs in Humboldt County. They centered around providing earlier as well as later bus routes throughout the county, and then including Sunday service. Also discussed was an express route recommended for students for Cal Poly Humboldt and College of the Redwoods, which seemed like a pretty good idea with students going back and forth to those colleges. Another area of discussion was about rerouting buses to cover the Blue Lake area, since the Blue Lake Rancheria ended their bus service. So the HTA service will be taking that up with the bus that runs to Willow Creek, so they'll be stopping both going and coming from Willow Creek and going into Blue Lake. And also, on October 4th, I attended the regular meeting of the Roanoke Creek of Recreation and Roanoke Park, and Park District, I mean, and we were advised by Merritt that the pre-application for the USDA loan was accepted. Doesn't mean that the loan has gone through, but the pre-application has gone through, for the Wellness Center, which is also known as the Swimming Pool. Have to call it the Wellness Center, though. The board needs to solidify the donation from the McLean Center, and there was discussion, discussion at that time about asking Colette Sanchi of Plan West to come on board, and as Merritt reported, that was done, and the board accepted a Plan West contract. On October 12th, I attended a special board meeting of the Roanoke Creek Recreation, and that's when we approved the contract with Plan West. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Mobley.
I have nothing to report.
Well, I have a little bit. It's been kind of quiet since the last council meeting, but we did have a HCOG meeting, and part of that, in keeping with the theme with Mike, is that there was a transit development plan brought forward and discussed, and one of those things was the stopgap of transportation for Blue Lake, to fill in the gap until a more permanent solution can be brought about. A couple of the internet, interesting things was a regional-wide transit card. So you'd have one card that you could get on the bus in Eureka, take it up to McKinleyville, down to Fortuna, with transfers. It would max, your cost for the day would tentatively max out at $6, so you wouldn't have to spend more than that, which would be good for students and people that, it costs money nowadays, we know, gas and everything else. There also is a plan in the works for a bus to Ukiah, so you could take transit from the transit hub in Eureka or Arcata, and take it all the way to Ukiah and back again. As of yet, I don't know what the times are for the departure and return from Ukiah, but the plan's in the works, especially with the hydrogen buses, because they're much more usable in that type of terrain, and the things that they have to go through, you all know what the Benbow Hill is like, and it works much better than that than the electric buses or even the diesel buses. So these are things that are coming along from the transit development plan. I have a historical commission meeting this coming Wednesday, and next week, we have another HCOG meeting, the regular one for November, and part of the discussion at that meeting is going to be on the State Transportation Improvement Plan, and I'll report back on that. Today, I attended the chamber meeting, and I had arranged for someone from Caltrans to come, but they caught the flu and couldn't make it, so I stepped into the gap and filled the need for the day for a presentation. And I noticed that people lived through it, and they're here, so. So hopefully that came out well. But with that, that's all I have to report, and get up here, and with that, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.